The whole stall resting.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the May twentieth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Columbia County Planning Commission to order. If you'd stand with us, Commissioner Wilder will lead us in the invocation. Commissioner Futch will lead us to the pledge.
I'll be with us. Lord, we thank you for yet another beautiful day. We thank you for this lovely spring weather. There are all the many blessings that you bestow upon this community and the privileges we have in this country to be together like this and meet and work together in the community. The fact that you look over our debates and discussions this evening and guide us in the right way. Lead us all home from here, all those here, safe home from this meeting. All these things in Jesus' name.
Thank you. And if I could remind you to turn your cell phones off, please, or silence them. We do have four or five commissioners present tonight. Commissioner Henderson had to be out of town on business. Gentlemen, you've had an opportunity to review the minutes from the previous meeting. If there are no changes or additions, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Gentlemen, you've also had an opportunity to look at the agenda, and if there are no amendments or additions, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve the agenda as it's presented passes four zero. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the planning commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made, excuse me, the decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the commissioners for final action on June first, 2021, at six P M. in these same chambers. If you wish to address the board of commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Kara Harden, and she'll have a request to speak form that you can fill out and submit to her if you would like to address the commissioners at their meeting. We're less formal in this meeting. If there is an item on the, in the public hearings that you would like to address, please raise your hand. We'll ask you to come to the microphone, state your name and home address for the record as these proceedings are recorded, and we'll give you three to five minutes to communicate what you'd like us to have as additional information, or if you have a position for or against one of the proposals that we have before us tonight. There's a second opportunity for you to address the commissioners and be on record during our public comment section. If there's something that you'd like to comment on with regards to the county that's not on our agenda in the public hearing tonight, again, raise your hand, come forward, and we'll give you three to five minutes to state your case at that particular moment. That being said, let's move on to our first two items of the evening. Mr. Butler, we have two massage operators licenses.
Thank you. The first one is a M O L for Brianna McIntosh, T B A massage by Bree at eleven oh six, freeze lane, suite A for on premise massage. It meets all the requirements of the M O L, and staff recommends approval.
Gentlemen, any questions? Okay, I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Brianna McIntosh, T B A massage by Bree.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Mr. Butler, Chloe Helen Roy.
So our request is for Chloe Helen Roy for an on premise massage at forty ninety Washington Road, Suite A. Also meets all requirements. Staff recommends approval.
Gentlemen, any questions? Seeing none, I'll need, this is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the massage operator's license for massage therapist Chloe Helen Roy to provide massage therapy at four zero nine zero Washington Road, Suite A.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Ms. Montgomery, we've got one conceptual plan tonight, a conceptual plan for the woodlands at Riverwood.
Yes, sir. This is a concept plan for the woodlands at Riverwood located off Clanton Road and Old Washington Road, currently part of the Riverwood PUD planned unit development. This is the location of the property on the south side of Washington Road, the east side of Clanton Road, and currently part of the planned unit development. You can see the piece here for the church that was pulled out of the PUD. This is the aerial of the site again, undeveloped property at this time. And the existing conditions, there are some wetlands and floodplain areas on the property. There's also some additional state waters that have not been shown on this plan yet that will have to be adjusted for with the final construction plans. The concept plan is very similar to what has been seen before. It's a hundred and sixty-four lots with four different lot widths ranging from fifty-five to seventy-five feet. Primary access is from Washington Road, and the applicant did submit an email from Georgia D O T indicating that the proposed location for that access would likely meet their requirements. There is a second access shown to Clanton Road. With the updates to the fire code, there is a requirement for two accesses to a project of this size. Alternately, they could provide sprinkler systems in all the houses, but the two entrances is definitely the preferred route to go, particularly with future phases of Riverwood to come yet to kind of tie the whole development together. Currently, the applicant's proposal is for that second access to be gated, to be emergency access only until Clanton Road is actually improved and paved for full access. At that time, it is anticipated the road would be ungated, paved, dedicated to the county. The lots are generally largest at the northern end of the project and decrease in size moving south. We do have a couple Central Park areas on the plan, as well as a handful of alley-loaded lots near the Southern Park. Overall, the plan is generally good, combination of site planning, avoiding the existing environmental conditions, showing the buffers and park spaces. We have a total green space on this project of just over forty-two acres. Part of the staff recommendation we'll see in a moment regards the buffer on Clanton Road. Clanton Road is somewhat unusual in that the current road is not within the right-of-way as shown. So it is staff's position that until that road is relocated and developed in the right-of-way, the fifty-foot buffer required needs to be measured from the edge of the roadway to provide that separation for the residential lots. The applicant has also submitted a pedestrian plan that shows sidewalks throughout the development, and water and sewer service will be provided to the project. Based on the interdepartmental review, there are several modifications that would be required to this plan, and staff is recommending approval with those modifications, which include relocation of the fire access road to meet separation requirements, improvement of Clanton Road to meet those fire code access requirements, the fifty-foot buffer being measured from the edge of the existing Clanton Road, revision of the alley cross-section, and revision of the development name. And that concludes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff?
On the improvements to Clanton Road to meet fire code access, does that mean compaction? So it'll, it'll, the road will withstand the weight of the trucks? Or what does that, what does that mean?
Yeah, so the requirement is it has to support seventy-five thousand pounds. It's somewhat up to their engineer how they go about doing that, but they would need to prove it can meet those weight requirements.
Do you know what it would take to do that?
No, sir.
Now, this, Mr. Lawrence, would you mind coming up and helping us with this? What, since you've built a few roads in your time, what's it going to take to support a seventy-five...
Eat Lawrence, two eleven Dixon Court, Evans, Georgia, three oh eight oh nine. All right, I think it's, we don't know exactly right now, but, you know, they're providing fire service on the plant road right now for about twenty residents. But we're assuming that it can bear the compaction of the fire trucks, that the only way to service them would be off a fire truck down that existing road. So the only thing we would state on there is they're going to, we're going to work with the fire department and in the county to make sure we, that it has adequate capacity. Now, who bears all that? We don't know that yet, because, like I said, they're already providing fire service on the road. There's no change to those residents on that, on that road already.
And the state is going to let you cut another curb cut?
Yes, sir.
And leave one at Old Washington Road also?
No.
They're going to be mighty close together.
No, we're not going to have one on Old Washington Road.
So they're going to close down Old Washington Road?
Well, eventually, Old Washington Road is going to shift over. Can I write on this one?
Yeah, I know what it's going to do about going to the light.
Yeah.
I just can't, it's hard for me to believe that they're going to give us one where you want it, a new one.
No, no, we are. We got it approved. It was actually, honestly...
Approved with Old Washington standing as it is?
It meets, it meets the guidelines. We submitted it to D O T with site distance requirements and everything and spacing.
They're not very far apart.
It's further than you think it is. I mean, on the scale-wise, I think it's, might be eight hundred feet. You've got a center turn lane in the roadway now, so it's actually set up for, you know, that type of traffic in there. Actually, you know, we disagreed a little bit with county on this one because they wanted us to get a letter from the D O T before, which is typically not done at the, at the concept stage, but we did do it, but it took us about six months to get it done.
With Wesley going in, are we going to have to worry about any decel lanes?
It's all going to be part of the same study that we turn in for the traffic. We're going to do that shared driveway between them, so it actually eliminates any other potential. That'll be the only access point for this track off of Washington Road on that side. Yeah, Old Washington, though, will disappear in its current location and shift up to Old Washington, to General Woods. But it does meet the requirements right now.
When? That'll all happen when it's decided who's going to pave that area from Old Washington over to the light.
Well, I would assume the county's doing it, but I don't know. It's right away.
Well, I've heard a lot of conversation both ways, you know, where the county says they're not, and some other people say they are, and I honestly don't know.
Yeah, from the development side, we don't need it moved. It's not going to change anything in our lives.
I understand everybody, but, you know, there's a lot of conversation both ways.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
All right, this is not a public hearing, so gentlemen, I'll need someone to make a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
I've got a lot to, I'm torn. Mr. Lawrence, could you come back up here a minute?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a hangup with meeting all these modifications that we've got listed?
No, the only one we're going to do is we, you know, the improvements on Clanton Road, like I said, is from our standpoint, you're providing, the county is currently providing fire service, so that road currently meets their guidelines, or the county's saying that they're not meeting the guidelines on a roadway to provide fire service. So we're going to do everything inside our development, but it kind of sets a bad precedent when you're going in there modifying the road. I'm not saying we're not going to, but we're going to have to sit down with engineering, traffic, and the fire department on that side. I think that's a, that's a big ask. If it was a brand-new road, of course, it would absolutely have to meet it, which otherwise, we're telling the residents of Columbia County that your road doesn't meet the requirements of a fire truck.
So you don't have a hangup with the fifty-foot buffer?
No, we've already worked, we talked with staff, fifty-foot buffer's not a problem. I do disagree in the interpretation in the ordinance, because I've read it. I think it's actually measured from the right-of-way based on exact verbiage, but we've told staff we'll comply with the edge of pavement.
The only hangup I've got, I think we're kind of putting the cart before the horse type of thing. Well, developing, and I know y'all are going to say that Washington Road is your main entrance, and it probably will be, but developing it from that point of view and not having something done with Clanton Road, whether it be the county or you, I'm not saying necessarily you, it's all on you, because it's really not, but I just don't, I have a hard time approving this development and leaving Clanton Road a dirt road. And you know and I know what would happen if we do this. As soon as you get that subdivision full, here's going to come a crowd of people that live there raising hell with the county about when we going to pave it.
Well, it's probably more from the residents on Clanton Road, because they were, they were told over eight years ago that road was going to be paved, and that was, it just hasn't been a priority to the county. That's not on, that's not on anybody in particular, but it hasn't been. And one of the things we've done is we've told staff before, and I apologize if it's not in this one, but I'll go on record as saying is, we're going to treat that gravel road, you know, to make sure that we keep the dust down on that thing, what we did on the other end.
But you agree with me that you know what is going to come?
Well, I mean, I'm going to tell you right here, because we've talked about this, we agreed to build the road right here with the roundabout, right there, as an entrance. And the county came back and said we had to build the road all the way to here, which is basically, I cannot remember off the top of my head, it's just shy of a mile. We were going to build the first twelve, fourteen hundred feet to a roundabout and terminate it as an entrance into the neighborhood and then go back out, but that wasn't satisfactory. So we've, you know, we went, dropped back and punted. We've worked on this for a year and a half. I mean...
I just think, and I know you disagree with what I'm about to say, but I think it's a little bit premature in that Clanton Road, there were some suggestions made, but there's not been any decisions made about who's done what or who's going to do what with Clanton Road before we approve the subdivision.
And we went right there. We said we would build it to there.
And the county said no?
No. It said that if we come in off of Clanton Road, any, anyway, we have to pave the entire frontage of our property, which is an undue burden. Now, you're talking about paving almost a mile of road.
Would you still pave it to there?
Yeah, we told them that.
But you still would?
We still would. We, we only came back with this one because they wouldn't let us go that way. But, I mean, you'd be asking me to go back to the county and ask them to change their mind of what, this, that original plan that we had brought it to there, exact same, looks exactly like that right there. We, we, we brought it, and they came back and said, we, we got ready to come to you guys before, in front of the planning commission, we got the condition that had to be paved all the way to the end.
That doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
We tried. That was our first approach. I mean, you can ask staff if they think I've misrepresented something.
And the roundabout was going to be open access or gated?
Open access.
Partially like a stubout on the dirt roadside, so they wouldn't run from dirt straight to asphalt?
Yeah, probably a couple hundred feet.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't be transitioned, not, not just a drop-off.
Do we know, do we know who refused to do that part of the plan, Mr. Early?
Not to my knowledge. I don't know who opposed to that. Again, I, I think, you know, for the benefit of the commission, the concept plan, it's not, you know, entitling them to, you know, the development as you see it. Obviously, there are some conditions that are attached. There's more work that, you know, maybe all has to do before they can come back with phase one of whatever the layout ends up, and they know that, and that's, that's part of the, the nature of, you know, what we do. And so there's going to be some additional conversation, additional discussion on the roads, you know, the access. They've got some tweaks to do as a result of, you know, additions to fire code, as mentioned. That's got to, you know, that, that Clanton Road access point's got to be, you know, adjusted perhaps a little bit. So, I mean, there's going to be some hard engineering that's going to be taking place if it hasn't already started. So again, a lot of these discussions that we're talking about are, are going to be ongoing anyways, but this will have to come back, you know, first phase of every preliminary plat, you know, it'll come back to the planning commission. So by that point, we will have definitive answers, one way or the other, on several of these issues that, you know, you brace here tonight.
Well, to start this issue rolling, Mr. Keith, since you said y'all were willing to do that, I'm going to make a motion that this be approved with the conditions that the staff made and change it to doing this roundabout down the way he's talking about.
Well, we're going to have to stop right there, at, you know, two hundred feet past that roundabout. We can't pave to the end.
That's what I'm saying. That's my motion, to stop it where you, they know the footage, where it was roughly drawn to.
So one thing that's got me is, you know, about paving.
So we've got, we've got a motion. Let's get a second before we start discussion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All right, now we can discuss.
The, the neighbors are going to, you know, you're not sitting up here Monday through Friday when the neighbors call three one one about the dust.
But I get the same.
From the dirt road. Help me understand how you're going to keep that reduced. You're going to, you're going to put a crush and ruin gravel or something?
And put leachy down?
It's like, don't quote me on this.
Y'all going to have a watering truck?
It's like calcium chloride. It lasts for, I think it is exactly what it is, and it lasts six months to twelve months. It depends on the traffic you put that down. But I'm the president of all our HOAs, so, believe me, I get the same, I get the same phone calls you get. So I'm not detached from that side either, and so we're going to want to control it, and that's what we did. We did it on the other end over there, and we have no problem.
Now, Whispering Pines, I...
We've already budgeted into the H O A what we're going to charge. That, it's not that expensive. I think it's, quote me on this, it's probably about twenty thousand a year. So, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, it's not insignificant to us individual, but over the entire neighborhood, it's not a huge cost. So we have no problem with that, and you can write that in the conditions as well. I mean, we have...
That, that was part of my hesitation.
Listen, we'd love for, be tied to a paved road. I mean, we really do, and we've tried our best to push that along, and just unfortunately, with the Sploskows, it just has been a lower priority item. And I get it, it's, there's a few, very few residents off of that road.
Mr. Dempsey, would you amend your message to include dust mitigation?
Yes, sir.
With calcium chloride or whatever agent they need to apply?
Yes, sir.
Seconds till hold of that addition? Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
This is not a public hearing, so even though it seems like one. Gentlemen, the motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Motion carries four zero. Danielle, my computer. All right, Ms. Montgomery, conditional use for special event facility, file R Z two one zero five zero two.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a conditional use for a special event facility at five oh seven C V B Industrial Boulevard. This property is located on the north side of Wrightsboro Road and the west side of C V P Industrial Boulevard and is currently zoned M one light industrial. Surrounding properties are zoned for additional industrial use to the north, for a mix of apartment, single-family, and commercial uses to the east, and single-family and commercial uses to the west on Wrightsboro Road. This is the aerial of the site and the existing building. The applicant operates an event planning business from one of the suites in this building and uses part of her space to host events such as bridal showers, rehearsal dinners, things like that, with a maximum attendance of fifty people. She has indicated that the events primarily occur on Saturdays and Sundays between the hours of ten A M. and ten P M. There are fifty-nine paved marked parking spaces in front of the building, as well as a large gravel area behind the building. So with the maximum attendance of fifty people, there should be sufficient parking on the site, particularly when balanced, primarily on the weekends, when most of the other businesses are not operating. The change of use from the industrial space to an assembly for the fifty people does require a new certificate of occupancy and may require some internal modifications to meet building and fire codes. So she will be responsible for, for any of those modifications that need to happen. This property is in the Interstate Activity Center, which is an employment center on the future land use map. This is an area intended for commercial use, light and heavy industrial use, and higher density residential. The proposed event center is a commercial use and is in keeping with the intent of this activity center, and staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? That one, are, are, are the events going to be catered, or are they going to perform food prep on site? And if that's the case, are they going to have to have a commercial kitchen?
If they're making the food on site, they would have to have a commercial kitchen. To best of my knowledge, they're not doing that on site, but I not know that for sure.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Yes, ma'am. Would you please come forward and give us your name and home address?
Jennifer Grubbs, and there will not be catering on site.
Have anything else you'd like to add to the staff report? All right. Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Okay. Going to sleep after about fifteen seconds. Gentlemen, any other questions? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve R Z twenty-one zero five zero two, conditional use for special event facility.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Ms. Montgomery, we'll stay with you. Get a change of conditions on tax map zero five two, parcel thirty-seven, file R Z two one zero five zero three.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a change of conditions for property located off Hamilton Road, currently zoned R two, single-family residential, to revise one of the adopted conditions. This is the location of the property between Wrightsboro Road and Hamilton Road, kind of at the end of Baker Place Road, and currently zoned R two, single-family residential. That zoning was approved in 2020 with a condition that stated a fifty-foot undisturbed natural buffer is required along Hamilton Road and Wrightsboro Road per section ninety dash one thirty-nine. So this was kind of a reiteration of county code with this condition. So we will see in a moment a variance request for the code section as well. This is the aerial of the site. It is currently undeveloped and the existing site. And the proposal, we did see the, the concept plan fairly recently. Their plan is to develop larger lots on Hamilton Road, about one acre lots, and then they would like to put the buffer behind the lots instead of directly on Hamilton Road. So that would be about a hundred and fifty feet of width that takes in existing state waters and floodplain areas and areas that will not be developed or touched in any way. So that will be an undisturbed buffer behind those, those larger lots on Hamilton Road. As we noted in the staff report, kind of doing those larger lots on Hamilton Road helps transition to kind of the existing larger lot development pattern down there. We think that's a very reasonable model of development, and putting the buffer behind those larger lots provides the separation to the actual R two portion of the development, where they are doing the, the mass grating and the smaller lots. So staff is in favor of the, the change of conditions and is recommending approval with conditions, just clarifying that they still have to do the buffer on Wrightsboro Road, that this is contingent on the lots running Hamilton Road, there's larger lots not being masqueraded, and that the other conditions from the rezoning approval remain in effect.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? Gentlemen, any questions? All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, ma'am, we have two back there. Yes, ma'am, young lady with the mask, please come on up. Please give us your name and home address.
Brad, four five three Sebastian Drive in Grove Town.
Who's your sidekick?
Renee. She, she, she lives in Willow Oak, too. We're right in Willow Oak Village, right off of Hamilton. Our concern is the seven houses lining up to Hamilton, which will have, obviously, the driveways on Hamilton, which does not go with the pre-existing area right there. Hundred and fifty-foot buffer is because there's, creeks are there, and it's mandatory. So, I mean, them putting a buffer behind the homes with no road, it's a state thing, you know? So our concern is right on Hamilton, one acre lots that do not go with the other part of the neighborhood. The driveways will be on Hamilton. Can't paint lines on Hamilton, separate the road. It is narrow. You can't put a truck and a bus going down Hamilton.
Ma'am, please, if, if you want to speak, I'm going to get you to, to give us your name, and, and so we're on the record.
So the concern is, are they going to widen Hamilton, or will they be putting a type of turn lane in Hamilton? The fifty-foot buffer on Wrightsboro is going to be there anyways, because it's on a hill. So, I mean, they're not going to worry about the fifty-foot buffer there, because you're not taking that hill down anyway. On Hamilton, the fifty-foot buffer will keep in with the area, but will also help with traffic. With the driveways on Hamilton, they park on the road, nobody's getting there. Older, but it's kind of a ditch. So, I mean, are we going to have to drive into a ditch? Sidewalks on Hamilton, other part of Hamilton does have speed bumps. They were required before Willow Oak Village was made. I, Eva, there is a homeowner on Hamilton that was trying for speed bumps for the other side, all the, the traffic. But my concern is just the seven houses right along Hamilton, not the other part of the neighborhood, the hundred and thirty-two, hundred and thirty-one. It's the seven one-acre lots. It can't be masqueraded because it's state land. You have a creek right there, you cannot touch it with the wetlands. So let's just throw one acre lots on there and call it a day. It doesn't go with the area and without traffic.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Do you have something you'd like to add? Just give us your name and home address, please.
Road is plain road. There's no any kind. The other house is on the other side of the road, back, different than, are fairly far back.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Hundred feet or so.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Please come to the microphone first.
I'm so sorry. The seven houses on Hamilton will actually have a Hamilton address, where the other houses in there will not be. So that's also, I don't understand why the seven houses will write up on Hamilton. But, I mean, if the county is willing to widen... But I mean, if the county is willing to widen the road, that would be absolutely wonderful. If they're willing to put in sidewalks for our kids to get to the bus stop, that would also be wonderful if you're going to put houses right along there. Might be seven homes on Ham, on that stretch of Hamilton right now, seven or eight homes, approximately, and there's kind of setback.
Alright, thank you, ma'am.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Yes, sir, you'd like to come forward? Give us your name and home address.
Yes, sir, Tyler Finley, eighteen ninety-six Park Drive, Columbus, Georgia. You know, when our engineer drew this up, originally, there was a fifty-foot buffer around the entirety of the property. He went back and, and a hundred and fifty feet. Lot, and that's what we're looking for here, that does allow us to get those lots on Hamilton Road. You know, the engineer, what he went through, but took into accounting the traffic on Hamilton. Lot width, and sure that it could. Not any questions anybody has about that.
One of the young ladies here mentioned that they were concerned about parking on the street, you're going to have restrictive covenants that would prevent parking on the street.
The only time somebody able to park on the street is if there was, there were no other parking spots in their driveway, and that will be spoken. Yes, sir.
Well, as far as, would you have any kind of a traffic study as a condition on this?
Yes, sir, the engineer's working on the traffic study, they're going to submit that with the preliminary plat, is my understanding.
That's correct.
And based on that traffic study, to determine whether or not we need D cell lanes or turn lanes or anything like that for either Wrightsboro Road or Hamilton?
Yes, sir.
As far as a, a bridge to cross the, the stream, is that a make or break? Going to have to build a bridge to do that, or you're going to have, have to cross it with a culvert, how? We, we've had some folks come in before and, and had a bridge to cross wetland areas before, and then they come in and they tell us what a hardship it is, and gee, we need to pull it out. So is that, is that part of your design here?
It is absolutely part of the design, we've, we've accounted for everything upfront, and if we've accounted for it here, we're not going to be pulling it out or telling you it's hard.
Gentlemen, any questions? Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone that would like to, to come forward and, and give us any additional information? Ma'am, you've already been up twice, so we're going to give some, no, ma'am, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you've already been up twice, you've had plenty of opportunity to give us your thoughts. Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, file RZ two one zero five zero three, change of conditions for the property located off Hamilton Road to revise the buffer requirements.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Ms. Montgomery, we've got variants, file VA two one zero five zero two.
Yes, sir, and this is basically the same request and for the same property, so I'm going to run through it kind of quickly. Like I mentioned with the change of conditions, the buffer requirement is part of county code, it was just reiterated in the zoning conditions. So we do have to actually waive both the condition and the requirement in order for them to develop in the, the manner they're proposing. So again, this is the location of the property, currently zoned R2, and currently undeveloped, and the existing site. And again, this is to allow them to move that buffer behind the lots, have the hundred and fifty-foot buffer behind the larger lots rather than the fifty feet directly on Hamilton Road. Staff is recommending approval with very similar conditions, fifty-foot buffer is still required on Wrightsboro Road, and the lots on Hamilton Road not to be masqueraded.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions to staff? This is a public hearing, is there anyone who'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve VA twenty-one zero five zero two, following condition.
Do your second.
Second.
Question? All in favor? To approve the variance passes four zero. Ms. Mystery, we've got a variation, file VA two one zero five zero one.
Yes, sir, this is a variation on forty-two thirty-one Evans Delox Road, on one point four acres, and the current zoning is two, is C2, and the use is undeveloped. It's a request for a variation to ninety dash ninety-six Evans Town Center Overlay District. Here's the location off Evans Delox, near the railroad lines. This is the only map, it is a C2 commercial property, and surrounding it in the gray is the industrial property, and there is retail, it's the other C2, and some multifamily in that area as well. Here is the, the aerial, shows that it's undeveloped. The close-up of the aerial, so the buildings, for the ride are the existing buildings for Pausing Paradise Business, his animal resort, and the owner is wishing to expand onto the adjacent property. Here is the plat and street views. So the, the variation covers the fencing and also the building materials. You saw a variance in, in March for the, the buffer.
Ms. Mystery, hold on a minute, sir, could I ask you to remove your hat while you're in the meeting, please, sir? Sir, could I ask you to please remove your hat while you're in the meeting? Thank you. Please continue.
Yes, sir, so the first variance, variation is for the vinyl fencing. This, the applicant is proposing the white vinyl fencing on the public viewed areas, and the variation is for a chain link fence that's going to be for the playground areas. Here is the concept plan, and the public areas will be here. And those will all be the, the white vinyl, and the rest will be the chain link because it's not going to be seen by the public. The industrial property is, is right here, the industrial, undeveloped, and this side is the existing buildings. The other variation is the building materials. So the, the building A is at the back and building B is at the front on Evans Delox. The blue lines represent the elevations that will have some metal siding, and they will be in the similar texture and color as the existing buildings. The other elevations will have stone and stucco and be in the public view. Here is the existing buildings. And these are the elevations to building A, so you can see there on the, the bottom side, that's the elevation facing Evans Delox Road. It'll be stone and stucco finishes with a trellis and some accents to give a very, a variety on the elevations. And the next one is building B, the two public views will have stone and stucco and accents just like the other building. So the staff's recommendation is for approval with a condition that the variation to the elevations and fencing will follow the description, the narrative, and as per the drawing submitted for this request, minor design improvements or alterations may be approved by staff.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir, would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen, do you have any questions to the applicant? Alright, is there anyone here that would like to either support or oppose the proposed variation? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition file VA two one zero five zero one, variation to the Evans Town Center Overlay District for the property located at forty-three twenty-one Evans Delox Road to allow metal siding and fencing.
Do your second.
Second.
Okay, there, there any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Sir, you have a question? Uh, does it have to do with anything that's under discussion right now? Because we don't have a motion on the floor, or nothing's been presented that you can comment on presently. Is that the, is that the, the Lidl? Okay, that, that's coming up later, we'll, we'll, we'll give you some information on that, that'll be the, the file seven for a variance, and then that, that'll address your question. Okay, yes, sir. Okay, Mr. Butler, we've got another variance, file VA two one zero five zero three.
This is a request for a variance section nine, nine eight, lists a lot of structure requirements, one on Shaw Street, looking to reduce the building setbacks for existing imposed structures. This is the location of the property on, on Shaw Street, and also surrounded on all four sides by, by streets, we'll kind of talk about that here in a moment. The zone of the property, again, primarily C2, they have some, some P1 here and some residential, and also some townhouse zoning as well, but again, primarily C2. A review of the site, again, is in use for a funeral home, and the existing site as well, we've got two photos of the existing site itself. And also the plat of the property, again, pretty old plat, and this is not, does not, does not, does not look very similar to what it looks like today, in terms of the plat. And so here's the plan, with the current setbacks, there's a shown in red here, you have a ninety-foot setback from the Carolina Martinus Boulevard and a fifty from Shaw Street that wraps around the property. The red section shows where you could actually build on the site if you didn't get a variance. Again, the existing building that's here, that is well within that, that area. They are looking to build a crematorium here, which kind of triggers the, the discussion on all of these variances. And the blue line outlines the, the, the request there, this before you deny, you basically have a twenty-foot MBL on this side, and then ten on Shaw Street to allow for the proposed buildings to be built, and also a handful of additional parking spaces. No reduction on Shaw Street with this setback, because again, currently meets. Terms of the request, again, having four sides of the, of the, of the property being surrounded by streets, you know, definitely limits the ability to develop the site. So again, a setback, setback variance is probably a, a good idea, to be able to allow it to be developed further. There's a condition with this, setbacks are reduced, it's shown on the provided concept plan, I did it April ninth, twenty twenty-one, that's more for clarification, you know, kind of describing which ones get reduced and all that. Can get a little interesting, as that's why the condition is proposed by staff, that includes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff?
Yes, sir, excuse me, how many additional parking spaces do they show it?
They're showing four spaces right there. And they have, currently, they have seven over on this side, and I think it's six of them over here as well, they're existing.
So they're, they're saying they'll add four to the existing?
They'll add four, so a lot of seventeen.
Total of seventeen?
Do they have room anywhere to add more?
Probably not, the, let's see, I believe this area is where the, the septic tank is. This area, even though it is in Martinus, is in a, in a developed area of the, of that community, does not have sewer access. Sewer is further up the road, not really feasible at this point, they're having a pretty hard time getting sewer to this property. So it's one that, it could happen in the future maybe, but right now, they're on septic.
So the four is most they could add?
Likely.
Unless they worked out some kind of a parking arrangement with a neighbor.
Yeah, I mean, they could work out parking arrangements on, you know, basically all sides except for Martinus, you can actually cross over Collector Road for that, but.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir, would you like to come forward and give us any additional information?
Juan McCoy with SD Clifton, at two one three Ansley Way, Harlem, Georgia. In, in adding the crematory, we're not going to be increasing our occupancy of the building, so the four parking spaces are really just to, for access to the crematory. Not like we're going to have more seating or more, or chapel or anything.
How many people that would attend to service at the place, the facility as it is right now?
Services of facility, just stay like they are now.
But how many, how many folks show up? What's?
I don't operate the funeral, so I can't.
How many, how many friends, how many friends you got?
When I die, I guess.
Depending on how popular are you.
Yeah, we'll actually find out. I was just, I was just curious if it was a parking adequate for what's, what goes on there now?
From what I understand it is, but I couldn't, I don't know that for sure. So we're, they're looking to build the crematory, and they'll be operating with the personnel they have on staff now, but.
Is there a parking problem now?
Not that I'm aware of.
And your neighbors are?
I'm not even a hundred percent sure, I think Augusta Telephone's over there, there's Petch, I guess that's how you pronounce it, Oxygen Place, there's oxygen tanks. Not sure who else.
Alright, I see Mr. Clyde back here with Augusta Telephone, I'm sure he'll want to come forward. Made the long trek from Lincoln County. Alright, thank you, sir, we may come back up. This is a public hearing, is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak either for or against this particular issue? Mr. Clyde?
Every board member, I'm Cooper Clyde at fifty-four oh two Highway two twenty east in Lincoln, Georgia. Before I get started, I'd like to say that we lost a EMT in Lincoln County today in a motorcycle accident. Dickinson was the last.
Hard to hear that.
Keep a minute of thoughts and prayers. Let me tell you, I'm pro-business, and Kevin's a good businessman, a good friend, and I've known him for many years, and then my, I'm also pro-family. My niece owns this property, my favorite niece, dead, all that, so I'm a little bit of a bind, but we, we do have a parking problem. Crematory, I don't think would add to the parking problem, that's, it's inadequate parking now, we take in more precious land and taking some of that up that perhaps they could use for parking, that worries me a little bit. If I understand the pre-planned right, and help me with something on this, but it looks like the crematory ain't add-on to the building too, right? Is that correct, am I reading it right?
That's correct, so you got the addition of the building here. I believe they're, I think it's right here, very small addition, it's like two hundred square feet, hardly anything.
Crematory's going.
Yeah, it's right here.
Down there in the circle. But I, I mean, I'm glad he's doing well in business, but sometimes during the week now, the weekend is not such a problem, and he's actually used parking places for us before we changed things around, we don't have any additional parking during the week now that he can utilize for his funeral services. And they now line up both sides of Shaw Street, block the mailbox, you know, and, and try to trailer trucks or UPS man comes, but Shaw Street is very wide, there's a show there how wide it is. But when they park on the corners of Shaw Street, too narrow for the UPS truck. So that's my concern, I just think they need to have a little more parking on site before they add on, would be my issue, so. I'll leave it at that, unless y'all got a question for me.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Alright, so I would say that I think he has three or four employees, of course, he takes the parking spaces, he's got funeral home vehicles, hers and another, they could, I guess that's five or six. That leaves a whole lot of, I wouldn't know if you want to call them customers, I guess call them visitors, visiting the customer or something, but thank you for your.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir, Mr. McCoy? Would you mind coming back up, please?
This addition going to create more traffic?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, my client's willing to add more parking, but we didn't draw any more parking without asking for another variance on setbacks. They originally asked me if they could add some on Shaw Street, and I told them I didn't think they could, by the way. Because it'd be pretty tight if you look right. Let's see, let me find it here. Right up in this area, right up through here, it would be a very tight lane for two cars backing into each other to get out, but they would be willing to add parking there if they could get.
Would they get four more spots there, roughly?
Probably, four parallel parts.
Two this way, two that way, kind of deal. But, but.
That's right, they're all for the parking, we just didn't request them.
So would the appropriate thing to do to be to table this and, and let them meet with staff to try to maximize parking on the site?
Oh, you could, how, how many seats do you guys have in there?
I don't know, that'd have to ask Kevin.
Because there's guidelines.
Thirty-four.
Do you have any, is that just one room? You only have one? So per code, their minimum would basically be nine parking spaces. They're over that. So now their max is going to actually be seventeen, which is what they're brought up.
They satisfied.
So they're, they're meeting code.
They meet code.
Yeah, they meet code, now again, does it actually function? There's lots of times where code doesn't function, or parking.
Correct.
And we, all the time are, yeah, this is fine, you're a restaurant, we know there's likely going to be more people here than what the code allows.
But again, the crematory is not going to.
Yeah, sure.
Draw in more crowd.
But if we have an opportunity to help alleviate an issue that some of the neighbors have, do you take the opportunity and, and put this off for two weeks and let y'all meet with staff and come up with a design that works for everybody? If they're willing to go ahead and add the extra parking spaces, or do y'all want to try to do? try to do this on the fly and just go ahead and we can put the approval in there and it get handled before it goes to the commissioners? Or do you want to wrap it up before we do that?
I don't think you can add it to this area here based on existing dimensions that are provided. That travel lane through here has dimensioned and the depth of angled parking here is such, angled parking depth is going to be greater than the depth of that landscaped area that's shown here. That's seventeen and a half feet compared to nineteen feet. So that even if you match the angled parking off the property into the road right-of-way, there wouldn't be any buffer opportunity or anything of the sort to gain those four or five spaces, while certainly desirable and perhaps even necessary. I just don't know that you can gain those spaces in that location and spending two weeks to figure that out is probably not valuable for...
Yeah, and about the best you can do is parallels.
Eliminate whatever is there, landscaping or grass, it's all, it's all going to be parking, it'll be parking all the way up to the road, or excuse me, up to the right-of-way, which is not the road in this instance.
If you did a parallel there, you could keep your ten footer, your ten foot landscape trip, but you're only getting like...
Two or three.
Two at most, probably. You're talking twenty-two foot length, probably.
So with it...
It might only be one space you'd get in there in parallel.
And they're eight foot six by twenty-four.
But presented as, as we see it, it's about as good as it gets.
Yeah, because I mean, beyond, beyond what you see as existing parking, proposed parking, obviously if they didn't do the crematorium, there might be an opportunity for additional three, four spaces there perhaps. That, that would tap the entire site out. Anything beyond that and you're off the property and into the road right-of-way. And I don't think we're in a position to be able to add, you know, private parking slash public parking for the benefit of this particular use and try and increase that number of parking spaces. Again, they're within our code requirements, right, wrong, or indifferent, that's what we're going by, because that's what we have to enforce. And I think they're within those margins and certainly they've gotten up to the maximum of what our code allows or code requires.
And in your mind, you're sure there's not going to be any additional parking needed for this?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against this particular Yes, sir. Please come forward and give us your name and home address.
Chadwick McCrickard, two one two Flowing Wells Road. I'm the owner of Petch Respiratory Services, recently moved in behind. So the opportunity for additional parking on our site is really not existent. Everything that we have. My only concern would be the roadside parking, because with our facility, we do have eighteen wheelers coming in almost daily. If that gets blocked up, it's going to affect our ability to get the product we need.
Here at thirty-eight forty-five Shaw?
Thirty-eight forty-five Martinez Boulevard. It's actually on Shaw Street, but it's...
Okay.
But it's legally thirty-eight forty-five Martinez Boulevard.
Is it causing your problem now?
I have not seen it, but we just moved in Monday. I haven't seen a problem. My only other concern would be with the crematory, which I've spoke to Mr. McNeil a couple of days ago or yesterday, I believe, about the crematory and any odor or any smoke that it might give off. That would be my only other concern.
But let's get back to the traffic. You don't think there's any problem with it now? And if he's telling it like it is, that it's not going to create any more traffic? I don't see why that's an issue.
I haven't seen any since we've been in since Monday. While we were there painting the building and such, we did have some of their clients park in our area before it was, I guess deemed ours or looked like our business. I think since then, I've really only seen maybe one service there and parking was along the side of the road, close to the roadway. That's, that's only been one time, so we haven't really been there long enough to judge it, so to speak.
And we do have a letter from, I believe, the manufacturer of the cremation materials, and they've said that they've got all kinds of whiz-bang stuff that eliminates, I guess, visible smoke and odors and all that kind of good stuff, and alarms go off. It's got some kind of double, double damper or whatever. So, so again, it sounds like they're going to a pretty significant degree to make sure they don't have any kind of a noxious odor or anything.
Right. And Mr. McNeil and I talked about that, and I have no problem with that as long as it actually comes to fruition and is a fact after it starts.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition file VA two one zero five zero three, variance to reduce the building setbacks at one oh nine Shaw Street.
To your second.
I'll say good.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All right, the motion passes three one. Mr. Butler, had a rezoning from R three to C three, file R Z two one zero five zero four.
This is a request for rezoning, C three with a conditional use for light industrial, forty-four hundred Riverwatch Parkway. I currently zone R three and undeveloped. Location of the property on the south side of Riverwatch Parkway. Also the zoning of the area, again, we'll, I'll go and talk about it. The zoning out here is kind of wild. I mean, you have M two to the north, you've got townhouse behind it, you have more R three to the east, B C S one and M one, you basically have everything out here. There's also some apartments, I mean, it's great. So the, there could be a lot of things that can go out there just based on the zoning itself. And also it shows air view of the site, again, undeveloped. There is no plat for the property. Really interesting story, we won't really get into it. There's the existing site as well, we've got two photos of that. And both kind of different views of it from Riverwatch Parkway. And also the concept. So the applicant is requesting C three with a conditional use for light industrial. These are all office warehouses essentially, you've got the office warehouse up front and then the office up front, excuse me, the warehouse in the back. They're nine, it's nine thousand square feet overall, split up into three thousand square feet of office and six thousand of warehouse. It appears, if it is rezoned, it will be in Evans Town Center. So it does appear to meet the max setback shown here or that. No idea what the building looks like, but it wants to meet Evans Town Center if it is approved. You know, you have your standard dumpster at the back of the property. Again, concept, you know, shows what they may build, there's no binding of the concept at all. In terms of zoning itself, like I kind of talked about before, there's an argument for quite a few things here. C three is, you know, less than M two in terms of intensity, but does give them quite a lot of options to do both residential, office, and not residential, retail, office, and also some things that are a little more industrial. The addition of the light industrial kind of brings in some questions. Again, the site is less than two acres, so it's, you can't really, you can't have, for instance, storage there, it's too small. It's also too small for things like bottling plants and things like that. I guess you could have like a really small operation that would go in there. But again, there's some things that kind of take out those uses. Within the request for the conditional use, they also had a part of that say that they would not allow any outdoor storage of materials or vehicles. We've added a condition that basically states that as well, kind of puts it a little more, more formally for that. In terms of future land use, if you can go back to that real quick, it's in Evans Town Center, I've talked about it before. This is supposed to be more of our mixed-use area, you have lots of different uses, you have, you know, apartments, commercial, some industrial in this situation. So again, it does fit within that. With the condition, though, we do think that it makes it even better, you know, having outdoor storage of things that can not be really, that can be unsightly from the road, this would help eliminate that. And so again, staff has recommended approval with the following condition, limited outdoor general storage is defined in section I S one forty-seven, I ten, and I eleven, mechanical code is not permitted, and that includes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Got one. Would this, would this, could this be defined as a speculative rezoning?
We have a concept. That is usually our bar that we put in place for saying, is it speculative or not? That has been dated upstairs with the B O C. What, what is speculative? We've had instances where they've asked for lease agreements, be shown, that sort of thing. But again, it's one that we have not been given direction on, anything further than a concept plan being shown to us as being speculative or not. But again, that is kind of our bar that we have in place.
Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Would you, would you all like to come forward and give us some additional information?
Good evening, I'm Billy Frankie, seventy-one eleven Grayson Drive, Graniteville, eight nine eight two nine is the zip code. I represent Doug and Mona Edmondson that want to develop the property. And it's an excellent piece of property. You mentioned the word speculative. I mean, I think majority of things that are done a lot of times could be speculative, but we've tried to broaden our uses as far as what we're doing in there, but the site plan, we intend to stick to the site plan this year and develop it accordingly. But we don't know what we're going to get. So I mean, to that tune, it is speculative. You've got the bus folks, the school bus terminal across the street, we may have somebody that wants to sell parts for buses. We might have a dentist that may want to go in there, we may have a real estate office that wanted to go in. We really don't know. But this is just a concept we're working with and we actually wanted to grade the site and start spending some money, but we were told we couldn't do that unless we got it rezoned. That's the first step is to rezonate and go from there.
Gentlemen, any questions?
So your, your part, your plans are set on this particular setup, office warehouse combination. It's not, we're not getting a shell that we don't really know what we're going to get, that you have no, nobody interested at this time.
We can't guarantee how much is going to be office or warehouse space in there. I don't know that yet, because it hasn't gotten that far in design process. And, you know, I know the exterior has got to suit the Evans Town Center, so it ought to be nice looking. We wanted a concept where you could get trucks and go around the building. But to answer your lot of questions, we really don't know, but this is where we're starting.
Mr. Frankie, what do you suspect to be going? That you'll get the most interest in?
I've, I've been in this business for forty-plus years.
I understand.
Things totally amaze me. I've been handling the Bragg's Office Park over there and we're, I know, doesn't mean anything to y'all, but it's ten dollars a square foot and we got seven dollars a square foot for retail when we built Walton's Corner in the eighties. So things have changed a lot. So I mean, you know, this could certainly be office warehouse space. And whether that's the highest and best use, I don't know, time will tell, but that's what our intentions are right now, starting. Like for distributors or maybe a little small showroom, little warehouse in the back.
Gentlemen, any other questions? All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, ma'am, please come forward and give us your name and home address.
Sally Kohler, and I live at six...
Would you spell your last name for us?
I'm K O L A R. And I live at six thirty-eight McKinnis Court in Evans, Georgia. And I own the property forty-three eighty-four Riverwatch, which is the White Victorian House right next to this. And I want to tell you that I would support anything that Doug does, because he's the present owner and he would do a great job. So the development, I'm all for it. I think he'll do a really great job. My only concern that I have right now is they're putting the school district completely across the street from this property. And also the turnaround there on Riverwatch, to go to the subdivision that is a little bit further down by the apartments, everybody has to turn right there. And I just see that there could be a bottleneck right now. When you come down Riverwatch and you try to turn into my property, people are coming fifty miles an hour down Riverwatch, and if they were turning into what Doug is going to develop, there won't be enough room for them to be able to slow down. I hope I'm articulating this correctly. I just think that that little intersection with that turnaround needs some thought and, but I'm a hundred percent for what he's doing.
Do we need to make any kind of notation or some kind of request of traffic to...
So they already made a comment that it has to meet their P A I policy. There's also a detail already shown on their plan. So it's being thought about, I'll put it that way. I can't tell you what the solution's going to be.
And that'll be, that'll be addressed in the site plan process whenever that occurs.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning, Mr. Frankie? Would you mind coming up, please, sir, so we can hear you?
Kind of with the curb cut, or the median cut, rather.
Right.
But there is a traffic light at the top of the hill, so I think what you're talking about is people coming from Evans on Riverwatch Parkway, coming over the bridge and coming real fast. You have the turn signal there, which will stop traffic and give you a chance to turn around or pull out, so it should slow the traffic down.
All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Being done, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions file R Z oh five oh four, forty-four Riverwatch Parkway.
To your second.
Agreed.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. All right, we've got one item left, sir. This is the, I think, the one you're, you came to hear about. This mystery file VA two one zero five zero four, variance to sections ninety-nine-eight and ninety-one thirty-nine.
Yes, so this is a variance application for multiple parcels on Washington Road and Roundtree Way on a total of three point two acres, and the current zoning is C two general commercial. Existing use of the properties, there's some partially, there's some developed commercial and some vacant residential parcels. And it's a variance to ninety-nine-eight lists and lot, list of lot and structure requirements, and ninety-one thirty-nine for buffers and screening. Here is the location on Washington and Roundtree. This is...
Sir, sir, let, let, let the lady finish and we'll open up the floor, the floor for a public comment. Thank you, no worries.
The zoning map shows that it's C two general commercial. There is some R two where the yellow sections are. The S one is a church and there is some multifamily there, too. This is the close-up of the aerial that shows the parcels behind the Waffle House location. And this is the plat. And this is a survey of the properties. These are street views from Washington. And this plan shows the building here, and it's a thirty-one thousand square foot grocery store, and you've got parking around it. The setbacks for Evans Town Center on Washington Road, it is Artira Road, so the maximum is one twenty-five, which is the blue line that you see here. And then that's the one that it's not meeting, and then the Roundtree Way is a collector, so the maximum is ninety here, and it's meeting that setback. So the variances for the, setbacks for the building, there is a, there is some topography on the site, it's about twenty-five feet drop, and so there will be some grading, the grocery store will be actually lower than the adjacent parcels. And this site shows the proposed landscape plan, the other variances for the buffer that's requirement of thirty feet between the commercial and the residential, which is along here. The tightest point is about here, will be dropped down to about eight feet, and there will be a retaining wall and some fencing and landscaping along there. And the applicants know that the Evans Town Center requirements for the building and screening is required, and they're working with the architects to do that. And staff is comfortable with the variance to the, with the structural buffer. Here are the site photographs. Site is in Evans Town Center Activities, the Evans Activity Center, so that's a mixed use of commercial, residential, industrial, et cetera. So this use is fitting to that location. And staff recommends approval.
Could we go back to the elevation of the building?
Site plan?
Please. Loading bay is the shaded area at the top?
Yes, over here.
Okay, got it. I just wanted to make sure we weren't backing up to the homeowners next door like some of the other groceries we've got in the area have done in the past. Gentlemen, do you have any questions, staff? Okay, sir. Now, please come forward and give us your name and home address.
My name is Robert David Gillespie, senior. I have traveled this road into Lowe's many, many a time. Across the street is a church, and right beside that is an apartment complex, and right beside that is another condominium complex. Um, across the street, there are residential, and it is a very low-traffic, um, area, and the house is actually pretty, and it shouldn't be destroyed and sold for commercial. I mean, if people want to live in this area and all's, everybody is going to do is demolish everything for commercial, then where are we supposed to live?
But I believe the property owners are the ones that are selling this.
Well, I don't know if they were selling it, because, because there's no for sale sign, it was.
They, they already own the property.
Okay. And if they're willing to sell, I'm willing to buy. Um, um, a vet, and it is a nice, quiet neighborhood and a nice piece of property in a nice neighborhood. Now, I mean, it's all residential there.
Okay.
And to turn around and destroy that and just keep building more commercial all the way down, where do we end? Would, uh, you just go all the way down to railroad tracks and, and you keep going commercial? I mean, we got commercial on the opposite side, and then they've got more condominiums being built right behind the commercial, and, and it, it just doesn't make any sense. Let me ask you this, sir. Sir. If that piece of property belonged to you, would you just sit on it and do nothing with it? No, I'd be living in it, and I would. I'm talking about the open property, where the vet office was. Uh, the property, oh, I'm sorry, uh, the property next door? Yes, sir. Um, no. Um. You would develop it and sell it, wouldn't you? I would turn around and recommend somebody build a home on it. That would never happen.
All right, sir. Gentlemen, do you have any questions? Thank you, sir. We appreciate you coming out.
Thank you.
We do need it.
Okay. Would you?
It's, um, fifty-three ninety-five, nine-five fifty-three Loblawi Trail, um, Martinez, Georgia, and my last name is spelt G-I-L-L-E-S-P-I-E.
Thank you, sir. Uh, is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir. I'm sorry, we jumped ahead, he seemed pretty intent. Yes, sir. Would you come forward and give us your name, home address, and any additional information you'd like us to have?
Del Renfro, representing Lidl U.S., four-hundred Interstate Parkway Northwest, Atlanta, Georgia. Um, yeah, I mean, we're, we're not coercing anybody to sell us parcels, so, um, we're going with the, with the zoning here and wanting to build the grocery store, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys.
What's your, what's your timetable?
With development, uh, we got, I think we have another meeting, and then, yeah.
Okay. All right. Gentlemen, do you have any questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against this particular variance Yes, ma'am. Please come forward and give us your name and home address. Yes, ma'am. Please start with your name and home address.
Linda Townsend, six-oh-two Pebble Beach Court, Martinez, Georgia. I represent a property owner, and he's not able to be here, and I would just like, this, it went so fast for me to see exactly where the retaining wall is. His property is five-thirty-nine.
And you can, you can draw on that if you'd like to indicate where his property is.
Okay. Well, I believe that's it.
Uh, it's the one with the green arrow on.
Did I do the wrong?
Yeah. You surrounded the Waffle House.
Where, okay. Let me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
So we know how much of a retaining wall is gonna have to, to be built to accommodate the fall of the lot.
I think, I think they drew it over there on that side, the, the blue line.
That'll be the blue one.
The blue line.
Okay. I just wanted to report to him, I, I want a retaining wall there.
Right. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Thank y'all.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Chairman, I would like to make the approval if I can find the motion sheet. I make a motion to approve filed VA two-one zero-five zero-four, variances to reduce the buffer width and waive the maximum setback for the properties located at forty-two eighty-five Washington Road off Roundtree Way.
To her second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four-zero. We have no text amendments, we have no legal matters. Do we have any staff or commissioner comments?
We are tracking on the, uh, comp plan update, so we should be, be, uh, we're in contact with DCA, um, I guess the end of last week, early this week, uh, have, uh, one small tweak to make, and we're, should have our approval from them, or their blessing, uh, to which we can put it on June agenda for the Board of Commissioners for adoption of the, uh, comp plan.
Okay.
But we're on track.
Our public is quickly leaving us. Do we have any, uh, public comments that you'd like to come forward and make? All right, seeing none, the hour of adjournment is upon us. Gentlemen, I need a motion to adjourn. To her second. Do we have any discussion? Discussion at all? Do we need to stretch this out to?